I just. I just told them I would let you guys know that I gave you all.
All right.
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd say.
So she went as a firefighter.
Well, I'm gonna need you to help me.
Yeah.
I'm like, you know, I can't. I'm gonna be sad and like.
Well, I think this is a little bit of a transition.
I know, I didn't do the bucket at all, I just, the whole thing was like tapping kind of calm fluid of anything else.
No, I.
I just didn't want, I wanted you to make sure you knew that I authorized that. On.
So this is sitting there.
I would say it is the best.
But he's. Yeah, I think it'll be. All of the. I don't know, I don't quite have any use for this. Be more than you know tomorrow. You have to ensure it's on. A dispenser. That's the. I just want to make sure like, I got the confirmation. Because no sometimes. Yes, well. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, yeah, I usually. Well, they actually. They don't get back here. But based on what they did actually.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, you got that.
I was getting that from my. Somebody wants to have it where.
Right.
Oh, I'm excited.
Yeah, I just want to do the. They have that or. Or I just want to make sure they consent or something, so that's good, thank you. Yeah. Uh, no, like.
Like I know animals can secure days.
That's why I thought so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, got it. I never thought that was.
Sorry, he was holding on.
Sorry. You should have like.
Um.
Not even. Okay.
I thought I was late, I saw your truck here. Ten minutes early.
Yeah.
I saw the new squad out there.
Or drive it.
Or drive. I, I've.
Yeah, I heard you're not actually.
I don't think you want to drive. Still, you know, it's driving.
We will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for Monday, September twenty-third, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States, to the Republic of America, to the citizens, one nation, one earth, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Council next on our agenda would be agenda review and adoption, I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With motion in a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries. Open forum, public comment, we have two registered, one here. Uh, so up is Karen Sartell, excuse me, Carol Sartell. Uh, Carol, if you could state your name, address, just for the record, and you have three minutes.
Sure, Carol Sartell, four eleven nineteenth Avenue South, Sartell. I want to advise people to not annex to Sartell, and some of my reasons are. We own about thirteen acres on the west side of Sartell. Before we annexed to the city, we met with the city to see if we could develop some of the land and sell lots. The city told us to make lots at least an acre and a quarter to accommodate Septic and Well. It was also recommended we keep the secondary access in case we needed it in the future, it would be grandfathered in. So we annexed. When we went back to the city with our plan for lots, we were told they had changed their mind, and we would need to bring in sewer and water. The cost of that would have been prohibitive, we built our own house on the property. Last October, we put up a temporary tent shed, not knowing the ordinance against that, to store items until we moved. The city informed us to take it down. I asked if we could keep it up until April fifteenth or until the house was completed, whichever happened first. The response was, take down a smaller permanent shed, and then take down the temporary shed by April first. The quote was, this is more than a figure compromise. So, take down a permanent structure to keep up a temporary structure for five months, it doesn't make sense to me. Now on to the walking path. We have fifteen hundred feet of walking path abutting our property. Went and has blown down trees across the path. I've used my favorite small chainsaw to cut out branches and stack the branches in the boulevard. When my husband went to cut up the trunks the next day, the branches and trunks were gone. Last month, a tree was falling, so I cut it up and stacked it on the boulevard on Saturday. The city informed me that it had been brought to their attention that the branches were there. I replied that I would take care of it. I wasn't sure if maybe a neighbor had been picking up the branches. I went to get my trailer and the branches were gone. I called the city parks and trails person and asked for the protocol. He said he appreciates homeowners helping to clear paths and recognizing dangerous trees. He said I could continue to cut and put branches in the boulevard, call him for pickup. The city hall response to that was, ultimately, it was my responsibility. The last item involves a culvert on our property. Here is a picture of metal culverts under a street maintained by the city. They are thirty-six inches in diameter. And here's a picture of our culvert, it's twelve inches in diameter. The city wants us to replace the culvert with concrete or remove it. To do either would not benefit or impact the city or us. I would like to propose a compromise. I will donate money to a cause that would have a direct impact. If you would give us a variance for the culvert, to leave it as is. I would give two thousand dollars to the Salvation Army, Habitat for Humanity, or the Celebration Church Community Store. This would be money much better spent and would definitely benefit the community more than a new culvert. Let me know who I can talk to about this, and I'm appealing to your common sense.
Thank you. Next up, we have Peter Wilson, don't see him present. Council will move on to approval of city councilments, September ninth, regular meeting, September ninth special meeting, and September thirteenth special meeting. Uh, I will, um, I guess make a motion to correct September ninth regular meeting. Um, looks like we are missing a couple. Uh, I votes on there. I talked with Anna earlier about that, so just a matter of correction, all five council members were here, I think every item was unanimous. I'll make that motion to approve with those amendments, uh, are there, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion on that? Or any other areas to update? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries. We have consent agenda items A through K. Take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve A through K.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries on to old business, we have financial management plan and preliminary levy.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Members of the councils, we discussed the financial management plan and levy at length at the September ninth special meeting, so don't plan on providing. Our plan to provide an overview of both, um, I would encourage our viewers to view the recording if they want to review a more in-depth discussion on our website. So, beginning with the FMP. Uh, the objectives are to allocate resources, to achieve our strategies, to maintain that flat tax rate throughout the ten-year period. And then to also meet our revenue and debt policies. This chart here shows both the change in tax levy, along with the change in tax rate. The tax levy is increasing year over year, but it captures the growth of our tax capacity, which shows our tax rate flat year over year. Fund revenue sufficiency, um, as you can see here, you see a lot of compliance, a lot of green, but there are some red, uh, which indicates non-compliance in terms of our reserve policy. So looking further at those red items, uh, the first is fire equipment fund. We're making a large purchase in twenty twenty-six for the fire engine, putting us out of position, um, but then we're able to grow this fund back into a. Um, better position for our next engine or large fire equipment purchase. Technology fund is just below zero in twenty twenty-five, but then we can grow that fund to achieve revenue sufficiency, um, while also planning for large expenses in the future. Street fund, uh, we have quite the mountain to climb here, but, um, the basis of all of this is our changed revenue forecast to be more conservative. So since we changed our revenue forecast to be more conservative, uh, we're showing non-compliance until twenty twenty-nine. Um, from now until twenty twenty-nine, uh, we only have two million overlay projects, debt service, and grant obligated projects. Um, so really only the things that we need to spend money on until twenty twenty-nine, when we can get above our policy. Uh, and start leveraging cash for projects. This shows our debt sufficiency, uh, the policy states we should not endet. The city in a way where total bonds outstanding exceed five percent of the city's estimated market value. So that top line there is what I project to be five percent of our estimated market value. The other two lines that are going across the graph are our target, which is two point five percent to one point five percent of our estimated market value. The projects that we're planning on the right-hand side, there are many, but the majority of the debt that we're taking out are for three projects. The West Side Project, the Additional Forest Main, and the Water Tower. Um, note that this does not include any additional debt issuances between, um, twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. Outside of the one million in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-nine for overlay projects, so. That is one concession of the financial management plan to achieve that flat tax rate while also staying within our debt sufficiency. There were a lot of tough decisions that we had to make in the financial management plan in order to achieve that flat tax rate. Um, we had highlighted all of them here, and just to note a few of them, we did limit personnel through twenty thirty-three. Reduced steel coats and overlays, which I mentioned on the last slide. Um, there were some police equipment impacts as well, and street impacts, um, that we had to make. In order to achieve that flat tax rate within the plan. So, as I mentioned, this is a plan, um, doesn't obligate you for any future spending or decisions. But rather a plan to help guide us, um, in the future to maintain the objectives that I had stated. So with that, would be willing to take any questions on the financial management plan?
Council, questions on the financial management plan? I just want to reiterate, one, uh, thing that Rob just said is, tonight we're really, uh, approving it. But it doesn't lock us into any of those items in particular. Um, it's more to approve that we do have a financial management plan and are working towards it. Is that an accurate way to?
Yep.
Summarize it?
But it would tie us to the levers that you outlined for the coming year?
For, yeah, and we can get into that within the levy.
The levy discussion?
About afterwards. The levy is going to obligate us to spending for the next year. Uh, we also go through levers for the levy next year in the next presentation. So good question to hold on to.
Do you want me to ask a question about these now, or should I hold it for the lever, levy?
Uh, you could ask about these now.
Okay, um, we briefly talked on the point in the workshop that removing the flock cameras, there's, might be a way to. Support those in another area, is that? Did I hear that correctly or no?
Yeah, I can take this with chief, you feel free to jump in at any point. Um, so, we are moving it out of the capital fund and, and really intentionally, because it should be an operational cost under our general fund. Um, but within that, as we're working through some of those variables between the preliminary levy and final levy, that are not determined yet, we don't know COLA yet. Um, we are not completely confident in our health insurance rate renewal, but as some of those shake out, if there's remaining funds at the end of the year. We acknowledge that some of these costs could be things that we could add back in, um, but we just, as we were making decisions, um, going through. This was something that could be removed from the capital fund to make sure they remain in compliance, and then move it over on the operational side, should funds be available.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, chief has, you know, got a prioritization list on his end of what to work towards first, um, because overtime. Uh, did take a hit, uh, the extended squad rotations, the flock cameras. And so, making sure that we, if there's funds remaining, that we achieve it in that priority order per his recommendation. Anything you add, chief?
No, that's accurate, and obviously it's something we really want to lose, it's been a really valuable tool. Um, I don't want to call it a luxury item in law enforcement, but it, can we do our jobs without them, yes. Does it help solve cases and, and solve cases quicker? Uh, and I could sit here and cite a number of really important cases we've used them on. And so we really don't want to go backwards and lose them, but it was, it was an easy item existing on capital improvement funds to, to try to make that fund flush, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know we had a lot of upfront success, so, but thank you. The other question was, can you remind me the limited personnel, what we were specifically talking about there?
Yeah, so incorporating the water, sewer, and stormwater study, we did, um, have to plan throughout the ten-year period to add in those departments. But outside of those departments, within the financial management plan, we have not planned for any additional staff. But, uh, with the caveat being, if we do have budgeted funds available, um, maybe our tax capacity comes in better than we anticipate, uh, adding staff. When it makes sense for a budget perspective.
And Mayor, I'll just add to that, um, the, the understanding from the department head level that if those requests come forward for staff capabilities at a future date. I- if there's funds available, it also would be a data-driven decision, that we're able to point to there being a necessary need. Uh, you know, whether it's additional miles of roads, or, you know, call volume is going up, something that we can point to. A direct cause and need for those additional hires, so it's not, hey, we have tax capacity and we're going to go hire people. But that is really pointed to a data set that shows that we have a need for those additional staff.
Yeah, the hiring level decision that we made as a staff, uh, level as well as, in lieu of not hiring personnel, we're really going to boost those capital funds. In order for us to reduce debt and be able to leverage cash for future equipment and infrastructure purchases.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Uh, just to follow up on the flock, you said moving the flock cameras to the operations budget, is that something that is going to happen, or?
If we would add them back in, we'd put it on the general fund side essentially. Right now it's being paid out of capital funds, and it's really not a capital thing, what we're paying for is the, um, renewal agreement for the software system essentially. And so we're really trying to get away from having our capital funds fund things that are ongoing operational costs, and really moving that to the general fund side, and so. Removed it as a capital fund expenditure, and then as our preliminary levy to final levy shakes out, and as we determine available funds. If we have available funds, we would add it back in on the operational side, on that general fund side. It's, do, it's like twenty, approximately twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-four, five, right now.
Annually.
Annually, a two-year contract, which, so we will have them no matter what through, uh, all twenty twenty-five or to the, almost to the end of twenty twenty-five. And so then we'd be looking at having to pay renewal, right, November of twenty twenty-five would be the renewal date, so.
And so if I can add on to that.
Sure.
So, we, we already did the two-year contract, we're going to have them for twenty twenty-five. November of twenty twenty-five is really when we would need to make that decision on acquiring. Are, were we planning to put twenty-four, five into the general fund for that, is that what we're looking for, or maybe it's for Rob, or are you breaking that of? Twelve, two fifty each year? What is that number, because I've, I've heard it twice, like concerns of, hey, we don't have that. What is that overall number of the general fund that we're saying we're not going to have added in?
So, it's for. Have we paid for twenty twenty-five yet?
Twenty. Yeah, so, it, and, sorry, we'd be losing the cameras in November of twenty twenty-five, we'd be paying them at the end, so we're, we're paying for it this year, it'll be. Out of twenty twenty-four's budget, so there's no cost in twenty twenty-five.
Correct, until November.
Until November, that would.
Twenty twenty-five would be our renewal.
That would be the renewal date to have to be budgeted for in our operating funds to pay it.
From then, does it go an annual, or is it?
Yes, then, that first initial, well, and I, I should, it's negotiable, uh, but flock is typically tried to push for two years. They almost have a non-negotiable first two-year to get that initial phase, yeah. But after that, I, most departments do push them to a one-year contract or per year.
So I think that gets us maybe to the question that we're trying to boil down to, is what is the overall cost that it's twelve, two fifty a year? That today is not in the general fund?
Uh, sorry, it is twenty-four, five per year, two-year contract.
Oh, it is, sorry, okay.
Yeah, so we'd be short twenty-four thousand five hundred for next year, uh, and operating as it stands right now to pay for it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one other follow-up question on the, um, limited personnel, we have some vacancies we've been holding placeholders for. Um, and are we just going to freeze those positions, or how do, how do, what's your approach on some of those key director positions as well?
Right now the budget includes their regular wages and salaries. And so, that's part of what we will look at between preliminary and final levy, is vacancy control with any vacant posi- positions that are currently open. But right now, the preliminary budget accounts for their wages and salaries, just as if they were the same person that was sitting here previously. Um, so we did not make adjustments to that, just wanted to be conservative there of knowing that there's going to be a need for some level of staffing there, um, just not entirely sure on what that will look like.
Good, thank you.
Adding on to that point, um, when this was presented to us on workshop, I heard it as. Limited personnel really not hiring anyone other than replacement, right, so no net new, with the caveat of three officers with the grant. Right? In the pre-read for tonight, I saw, um, uh, parks, full-time hire, is that a net new, or is that a replacement?
Um, good question, it's a, it's a net new, but a replacement for a contracted position. So right now we contract out, um, the services that would then be provided by the, the net new, a- and it, it's actually a cost savings, because it's cheaper than what the contract is.
Okay.
If that makes sense, so it's a new, entirely new person, but replacing a, a consultant.
Net positive from a budgetary perspective, kind of what this, what we're doing with the facility maintenance worker as well. We'd be adding a personnel, but removing potentially a contract from, um, our cleaning services, so. Although it's additional personnel, it's improves our budgetary position.
Okay. Are there others like that out there that we're saying are net new, but are actually part of a contractor?
The facilities maintenance worker would be the other one that, those are the two contracts that, and the, um, turf maintenance agreement, that were the two that will be better net position by hiring internal staff. But not. It's net new body person, um, but replacing a consultant agreement.
Yeah, I just think general overview, like, we've come a long way with capex plans and some of the way that you're presenting tonight is, is really progress for where I've seen. I, I do think, as we head into next year, I would love to see us continue to spend more time on our spending allocations. Um, you know, ultimately right now, as you read through the financial plan, um, just if you were to look at debt, debt sufficiency, you know, you're, you're really looking at the math of growth. Uh, in a projection, we're not actually reducing that, we're actually getting to our, uh, goal by growth, uh, and we don't know what the future looks like, and ultimately, there's a lot of pressure on the economy. And ultimately, uh, that would put us in a position of either, uh, higher levies or, or reducing expenditures. And what I would love to see us do is continue to look at what a priority matrix on our spending would be going into next year, so when we're, um, actually up here making decisions. Because a lot of the decisions are driven by grant timing, or timing of year, and some of those things, so we make decisions on financial things, uh, that maybe aren't as high of priority. And we're not always thinking as council members, uh, what would that prevent us from doing later this year that we don't know is coming yet? And so, I think from a spending perspective, really understanding, so I love the creativity and, and that we're looking for ways to reduce. Um, but ultimately, looking at projections, should the opposite happen, what would be our contingency plan from a spending perspective? So that we don't have to rely on debt or raising taxes to actually pay for that. So I think, if we can continue the work we've done over the last year and a half and, and, and not stop, uh, and continue to look for, uh, specifically a spending priority matrix, I think would be very helpful as we go. The only other thing I saw in here from the perspective, I wanted to ask a question, I was the cyber, uh, or the, um, uh, information technology budget, the technology budget. Um, are there cybersecurity, uh, investments within those funds, or anything allocated, should we ever have an event? What kind of insurance do we have, how much would it cost for a partner? Uh, those are things that continue to increase for all entities, including public entities, that we should also have prepared with some sort of contingency in our, in our savings plans.
Uh, yeah, speaking to the cybersecurity question you have, we do have cybersecurity insurance, I'd have to look at our policy to see what our liability is. And then also, uh, with the new contract that the school's proposing, um, that we enter into, there is a line item for cybersecurity services, so. Bolstering those services and, um, reducing our risks so that we're, um, eh, not exposed to, um, something like that.
And, and when you look at that policy, I think it's really important to understand what kind of, um, resources outside of, uh, losses that they provide, right? Because that's actually the most expensive part is, uh, depending on what happens, is the company have to go hire to actually help you, uh, get rid of that versus your current contractor who might not have that skill set. And so really understanding, you know, what would that cost, how much does it look like, is there any insurance coverage for that, how much is it, what would that actually buy us today? Uh, in that world, as it relates to a firm that actually would have the capabilities of doing it, so just a little bit more depth there for us.
Yeah, I would just add to that, to Rob's point of, um, that cybersecurity is a part of our IT contract with the school district, primarily around training for our employees. Um, and so. Primarily around training for our employees, um, and so one of the greatest risks around cybersecurity and, and we've even noticed that in, in hacker. Email attempts or, or attempts on our, um, you know, where they misrepresent people in their emails. Ninety-five percent of the time, it's, it's user error. It's something that people aren't recognizing on our end, that that is not. An actual email and that it's a fraud hacking attempt, um, and so really honing in on that training component, which we have not done historically. Uh, and so we wanted to ensure that was included going forward of just recognizing that our employees ultimately for cybersecurity purposes are your, that is your greatest risk. Um, cause they get access to your system through people. Uh, so really bolstering that training requirement for our employees going forward and that will be incorporated in the agreement, uh, going forward.
Yeah, I love that. The prevention side of that obviously is, um, human beings are the, the most vulnerable. Uh, I just know in, in dealing with that in the past, that the actual cost of, of hiring, uh, if an event was to occur. By human or something like that, oftentimes your insurance policy potentially could lack the actual expense to, to do what you need to do, so.
Council, any other questions on the financial management plan? Seeing none, we would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax plan by Mitchell.
Tim is making a motion to approve the financial management plan?
Thank you. That's what I'm trying to say.
A motion and a second to approve the financial management plan, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries. Onto preliminary levy.
Sure, so now we roll into the twenty twenty-five preliminary levy and which has implications on our spending for twenty twenty-five. Uh, process, uh, as stated, we started with the national community survey, we assessed the needs and conditions, priorities from the survey. We developed our ends policies and operational strategies, we presented the utility rate study. We just approved the financial management plan and we reviewed the levy at the budget workshop, all of which contributed to our decisions for the twenty twenty-five. Preliminary levy. So the proposed levy, uh, and the levy is how much property tax the city wants to collect. We budget expenditures, we budget other revenue and there's always a gap there. And that gap is what we fill with the levy in order to maintain balance. So our proposed levy is an increase of just over three hundred thousand, three point two percent from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, which is the lowest percent increase. In our levy in the past five years. And within the bar graph there, the blue is the general fund levy, the red is the capital fund levy. And the green is the debt service fund levy. As you can see there, the general fund levy is the largest levy, uh, that we're proposing for twenty twenty-five. And what all makes up the general fund? Well, over seventy-five percent of the general fund is for salaries and benefits. So mostly people related, which are also tied very closely to our union agreements. When you break it out by department, public safety at fifty-eight percent, public works at fifteen percent, culture and recreation fourteen percent and general government at fourteen percent. The two that increased were public safety and culture and recreation, based on the input and priorities from our national community survey. The changes by category, uh, general fund up twelve percent year over year. And as you go through those line items, most of them are people related, the step increases, the cost of living increases, uh, healthcare. Uh, at this point, cost of living and healthcare are estimated, uh, we should know within the next few weeks what cost of living and healthcare will be. Debt service up three percent, just to account for the increased principal and interest payments, and then you see capital funds down forty-one percent. Uh, which was the lever that we mostly pulled in order to maintain that flat tax rate year over year. And you can see it's not just affecting one department, it's across the board, the police, public works, street and technology. The tax capacity, when you aggregate all of the tax capacities in the city. And then you adjust for homestead tax increment, et cetera. You have a change of three point two percent in twenty twenty-five, which is still estimated from the county. But based on estimate, historically low, uh, it's historically low due to the homestead market value credit. Which was enacted in the twenty twenty-three legislative session, takes effect into budget year twenty twenty-five. So more properties are receiving the homestead credit. Uh, we also have very low market value increases on existing residential properties year over year, um, lower than we've seen historically. And then also very historically low building permits in assessment year for twenty twenty-three. So the combination of all three of those, uh, is resulting in our lowest estimated tax capacity at this point in twenty twenty-five. So when you take the levy of ten point four million and divided by our tax capacity of twenty-five million. You get to a tax rate of forty-one point six percent. That forty-one point six percent in twenty twenty-five is the same. As the forty-one point six percent in twenty twenty-four, which results in a flat tax rate year over year. Which is what we're proposing in the twenty twenty-five preliminary levy. Uh, again, uh, not an easy, uh, decision, um, collectively as staff. To achieve that flat tax rates, um, a lot of, um, difficult decisions in us in order to achieve that flat tax rate. There, as we talked about earlier, are some potential variables between now and when we approve the final levy in December. Um, two of which, which could potentially increase our expenditures or decrease our cost of living adjustment and healthcare. Right now, we have cost of living adjustment at two point five percent, but we'll know the second week of December, what that cost of living adjustment will be. Healthcare, we have around three percent and we actually meet with them in a couple of days to understand our. Healthcare premium increases or decreases hopefully year over year. Potential other variables, um, for us to consider. To try to reduce our final levy is vacancy controls. We had talked about potentially hiring our facilities maintenance worker. To reduce our contracted services, there's potential revenue and fee schedule for us increasing fees. Uh, there's potential revenue from fiber system re- revenues and then the township fire agreement, which is not. Um, finalized at this point, uh, could also lead to some potential increased revenue. Um, but just knowing that any increase in revenue or decrease in expenditures from now until we approve the final levy in December. Uh, staff plans on allocating, uh, proposing to allocate those funds into our capital improvement funds. As you've seen there, we're out of compliance in a couple of those funds, so having additional levy dollars to contribute to capital would help us. Reach compliance and potentially also mitigate debt. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions on the twenty twenty-five levy.
Real quick, just following up on your last point there, hey, any, um, on the bottom there, any remaining funds to be reallocated to capital? Uh, I think in the financial management plan, we talked about. Employees. Is it capital? Are we?
If we were to add employees, is that weird?
Yeah, so in our financial management plan, we talked, uh, you guys had shared that, hey, if there's any, uh, variance or room that is created with lower COLA than expected. Or vacancy controls that, hey, we would potentially add it for employees, but quantify the need for that employee. But out here, we're saying any remaining funds would go to capital.
We have all collectively as a department head team committed that, um, the only employees that'll be added over the course of the next three years is for three police officers.
Long-term.
Yeah, yeah.
With the financial, like if we had extra funds long-term, we would, uh, but this is just for this year, not, yeah.
Yeah, so we've collectively all agreed that, um, in order to get our capital funds back to a spot, uh, where you slides previously, um, their original amount.
In compliance?
Yeah, that we would discontinue hiring of staff, uh, to get to that place and make sure that. We're, uh, appropriately funding those capital funds. I, I did wanna point out on that note, um, Rob on this slide here. And for all of you, just to have a general understanding, you can see the big spike there in the tax capacity, but also recognize, um, how it matches. With nearly quadrupling our initial, I mean, if you look to twenty twenty, the red bar there of capital funds. And then where we were at in twenty twenty-three. We had a, a, a large tax capacity increase and then chose to strategically take those funds and place them in capital funds. In an effort to try to get to a place to where we can be closer to not having to, to pay cash for projects and not having to take out debt for them. Um, so we captured that tax capacity in the capital funds, but then if you move to the next slide, um, you'll notice that those cap, uh, one more, sorry. Okay, there you go. That those capital funds then inherently, when you're trying to balance in a year where you have low tax capacity, are the first that take a hit. And so we got these to a really healthy level, really started building those funds, but unfortunately for this year with that historically low three point two percent. Those are the ones that are taking the, the largest cut collectively at forty-one percent, um, but still remain our goal as these variables shake out. That hopefully that forty-one percent can be lowered and that it's less of a hit to our capital funds. Cause we really made a strategic effort to build up cash reserves so that we can avoid taking debt out for items. Um, so that will continue to be our primary goal as we're working through, uh, preliminary levy to final levy.
And I can appreciate, um, needing to tighten the belt right now, uh, all of this makes sense to me. The two hundred eighty thousand out of the street fund continues to hurt, like, that is the single. Most frequent, uh, complaint I hear is just our condition of our roadways and the old adage of, you know. Quit building new if you can't maintain what you have is, uh, really starting to beat loud, so I think anything we can. Come up with to put back into that fund will help us down the road as well. Council, other, uh, questions?
Mayor, just to add to that, um, and just to make sure to call out for everyone, that is, the street fund is our priority as well. We've been able to really chip away at some roads recently by making a, ma- making those capital investments, so kudos to you guys for supporting that work. Cause I think around town, you've seen several roads start to be repaired and people are really appreciating that. It pains us just as much to have to take any level of a pause. I think we're calling out West Side Reconstruct Project will, will get a significant amount of. Roads completed with it and then twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-nine, um, taking out some level of debt to keep those projects, those overlay projects going. We'll revisit that at that point to see if that one million is enough, if you guys wanna look at more. But also wanted to make sure to call out that that street fund is highly unpredictable, because if we can, if there are, are special assessments that come through. For sales of property, um, that goes into that fund, um, sale proceeds for anything on the Mill District, that goes into that fund. And so we also have that out there, knowing that there could be potential revenues that we just can't predict right now. We are being ultra-conservative in those predictions. In previous years, we've chosen to account for some of that revenue and we just decided this year. Let's not account for it, because we really don't know when that will come into play, but if it does, it will go straight to that street fund. And so be encouraged that it's not, I mean, it hurts and it pains us too, um, but we're hopeful that development will spur development. And that some of those special assessments will come in, you'll see sale proceeds and we might be in a, a very different position next year.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, question related to COLA and health insurance, if those projections come in higher than, than you outlined here. What would be the next items you would review to maintain the levy?
I'll take a stab at this, but you can jump in. Um, do you wanna go to the variable slide? I, next one. Um, I, I think we have a high level of confidence that if we're not conservative enough on that COLA and healthcare. We do have some options on the items that you see on the right-hand column there that can help compensate, so. Um, our goal of course is that it's nothing worse than break even at the end, um, but we know we have some vacancy control that we can work with. Uh, and even sometimes it can be something as simple as delaying the start date of a position. That can save you a substantial amount of money, um. That facilities maintenance worker, you know, fee schedule, which we'll discuss in November, um, and then fiber system revenues and the, the township agreement. All of those items were, we have a, a confident, we have some confidence there that we're gonna be able to generate. Anything that might be able to compensate for not being conservative enough, conservative enough on the COLA and healthcare. We do the two point five percent that we have in there, um, I think it's called the senior. Ryan, you might recall what this was, the senior, it's.
Social Security.
It's that, yes, the social security senior group that comes out with an estimate in like August. Theirs is around two point five percent. We'll find out the national COLA index, index in the, um, first two weeks of October. But they've been spot-on every year and so we feel confident with the num- using that number. Um, the biggest variable is healthcare and then also understanding with that, um, when is the right timing for us to potentially move to. A, a self-insured or a blended self-insured plan, uh, so looking at that this year as well, but. I, I think we've been fairly conservative on those rates. I, I feel pretty confident in the numbers we've used. Would you add anything to that?
Based on our indication, it seems like we're conservative on both COLA and healthcare. But if we, if it were to materially change from now until December, I mean, the, the general fund being seventy-five percent people. Um, we have to pay our people per the unique contracts, uh, debt service, we have to make our principal and interest payments. So more than likely, we would have to come out of capital, um, uh, but, uh, as Anna mentioned, there's some other variables. That we need to see out as well, the vacancy control, uh, we could increase fees, um, there could be some revenue from the fiber system. And revenue from lease-up township, but, um, if it was a material change, it would more than likely have to come from capital. And that would adjust some of our larger capital equipment, infrastructure spending.
Yeah, I think that, that was really the point I was trying to make of saying, hey, what are our contingency plans? How far can we go ahead of that? Can we make some assumptions that, you know, present, potentially your projections come in much lower than expected? Where will we go first? Um, you know, we have things that are happening within our financial management plan, we're around capex of replacement of different vehicles over different times. And I know you look at that, but you know, the, that world's changed as well. I know there's some of them that we, it looks like we replace every three years. Uh, computers, uh, replacing every three years, some of those things, uh, for the work that we do aren't always necessary. Uh, from an if, uh, um, actual capital expenditure perspective, those are places that we can go, because. I, I, no doubt the budget here, you guys tightening the belt, you guys are looking at levers, uh, I appreciate all the work that the staff did here. Um, I just think we need to continue that work as we move forward in a, you know, some lo- level of spending priority matrix. I mean, we've, you know, if you look at the levy again, you know, over the last three years compared to the previous three years, you know, it's been eleven and a half percent higher than past. We're working towards getting to cash, uh, for projects in the future. I know that's our goal, deleveraging debt is our goal. Um, and, um, there's gonna be a lot of hard decisions along the way to try to get there, uh, and then hopefully from my chair at least. Uh, potentially times when we could start talking about maybe some reductions in, in what we're passing on to the actual residents here, so.
I don't, I don't disagree. I think those are great points. I, I just, I get concerned because I think historically, it's always been the crutch to. Um, take funds out of capital expenditures and we have some pretty big things coming up in the future that we know we need from a utility and. Water standpoint, and so when we talk about streets, I think that's kinda why we're in the position we're in, because we have historically as a, not us or. Staff, but as a community relied on that fund to fund other things. And so that's, that's a concern that I have is continuing to go back to, to, um. Those capital funds when we know those projects, projects are gonna be needed in the future. Or near term.
Any other questions on the preliminary levy? Seeing none, I will call for a motion on the preliminary levy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the preliminary levy. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries. Onto department reports, we have administration.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for administration? Seeing none, thank you. Finance?
Yes, can you, do you have my report as well? I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for finance? Any questions for finance? Seeing none, thank you, uh city commission updates. See note on the planning commission vacancy, uh call it there, I think that is open through the thirtieth, is that accurate? Good. Um city council committee updates, Tim?
Uh nothing tonight, thank you.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Alex?
Nothing.
Jed?
Nothing tonight.
Um I have nothing as well, look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'll second that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.